Keith Gagnon, 106 and 108 Paradise Lane. And the second is from Mike Saucic on 149 Arnold Road. After that, we'll have the Town Planner update, and then old and new business, and then adjournment. So has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of March 10?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Very good. Okay. So the first A and R is Keith Gagnon. Do you want to go over that?
Yes. So, oh, sorry. So, a plan was submitted for Keith Gagnon for 106 and 108 Paradise Lane. And this is for the combination of these two lots. There were two homes on this property, and they received Conservation ZBA approval to tear down the two homes and build one new home in its place. The lots will still be non-conforming, but far less non-conforming than it is now with the two structures. So since the plan meets the requirement, I'd recommend that you would endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
All right, I was going to bring it up, but I didn't even turn on the projector.
I think my only question, Charlie, I'm sorry, is do we know what the address will be, and does that matter if it's combining two parcels?
The assessor sets the new address, so...
So, once it's approved, presumably they're going to sign it?
Yes, and I think she's already set it up. One or the other.
It's a 107.
It's in our permitting system, so... It's one or the other. Sorry, I can't tell you offhand. I think it was 106.
It was just curiosity.
Yeah, that's 107 across the street. No, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. But they will, yeah, they will. Anything else on it, or?
No.
Okay. Motion then to approve the signing of the A and R. So moved. Yeah?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Very good. We'll do the next one, and then you can sign them both if we approve the other one.
All right.
So the other one is an A and R from Mike Saucic. Do you want to?
Yes, and this is for a property at 149 Arnold Road. They are before the Conservation Commission right now for this proposed lot B. And we needed to be able to create the lot in our permitting system, so... So this is the A and R to create, Propose Lot B, and the lot does meet the requirements, so I'd recommend you endorse that plan.
Any questions or comments on that one? And a motion to endorse.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Very good. Okay. Well, it's not enough, you want to wait?
Give me.
All right. Very good. So the next we have is the Town Planner update.
All right. So you have a few things in your packet. And the first is really a draft that has the heading Town of Sturbridge Local Code Assessment that was prepared by Ty and Bonn. So for roughly the past, not quite a year, they started this, I think, last June. They've been working with myself, Heather Blakely, our DPW Director, and Lauren Bibby, our Conservation Agent. And this is a requirement of our NFTs permit that within four years, we needed to review all of our bylaws, wetland regulations, subdivision regulations, basically to see if we could be doing better, if we could be implementing more green techniques, could we be creating less pavement, you know, basically, you know, what could we be doing to help protect the environment, cut down on that impervious surface? So it might be reducing the size of your parking spaces. It might be instead of, you'll see in here, there were things like, instead of a minimum parking requirements, you have a maximum parking requirement. Instead of creating all the parking for a large project, maybe you land bank. So you create a parking lot, and then if in the future you find that they need the parking, then they can pave additional. Or sometimes they use these, Dan would know the appropriate word, but they're like honeycomb structures that go into the earth, and then the grass grows up through them. So it's kind of more solid. If a fire truck or an ambulance had to drive on it, you can drive on it. So those are the types of things that we need to look at. I did send you all a spreadsheet, which was very difficult to print, so that's why I haven't given you a hard copy yet. But you'll see that they had to take all of our requirements and compare them using Mass Audubon standards. And they rated our bylaws and regulations with, we meet the conventional, we're better than conventional, and we're best practices. And actually, I was pretty happy to see a lot of yellows and greens, meaning we have a lot of better and a lot of best. And then areas where we're conventional, meaning, you know, we're kind of doing the common thing, they're asking that we, by certain benchmarks, go through and review these bylaws and regulations, and hopefully make some improvements. It doesn't mean that everything that's in this document, we would need to implement or would even agree with them about implementing. And so just, that's kind of a general overview of what this is. And you'll see that our timelines for implementation are pretty far out there. They start in 2026, and they go all the way out to 2030. But just to give an idea, and like I said, this is draft. We've sent them back some corrections. They had some of the adoption dates of our bylaws a little off. And in one area, they were recommending nine-foot driveways, and we just knew on the staff level, even 10 foot's going to be a stretch, so they're changing it back to 10 foot. And then we'll look at that. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily agree with it, but we'll do our due diligence and review things. So if you go to, really where our provisions start are on page four. So as I mentioned, it was a review of the zoning bylaws. It was a review of our site plan standards. You'll see that under Site Plan Standards at the bottom of the page, it will say that, note that while the Sturbridge Site Plan Review Regulations were reviewed, there were some minimal provisions related to street design, parking, or green infrastructure. Well, a lot of that's because our street design is found in our subdivision regulations, not in our site plan section. Our parking requirements are found in a parking chapter. So a lot of that is, you know, so where they're saying minimal, it doesn't mean we don't have it, it just wasn't in the section that they reviewed. So I did give them a lot of feedback of, like, oh, refer to this section. And that's what you'll see in the spreadsheet when you look there. They might have said, oh, they didn't have anything, and they now have incorporated a no, oh, C Chapter X Parking, so...
Sorry to interrupt, Jean. Would they, will they be revising or responding to your comments and your...
They have, and that's what the spreadsheet reflects, really. Their recommendations for this memo are still their recommendations. They know that from doing this, they're supposed to look at it with Mass Audubon standards, and they're supposed to be encouraging kind of the maximum possible. So, and we had this discussion with them. Just because they're, you know, encouraging it or suggesting it, it doesn't mean at the end of the day, we'll find it's a perfect fit for Sturbridge. So the idea is to take their recommendations, look at what we have, you know, how can we change it? Can we, you know, some of our pavement widths are really large for small subdivisions. Maybe they're too big. Can we get it down a little ways where police and fires still feel comfortable that if there were an emergency there, they could get there? So that'll be the process that we go through as we start to work on some of these things in the future. And then next page, it was the rules and regs regarding subdivision of land, and then stormwater management bylaw and regulations, which the stormwater standards for the state are being updated right now, too. So even this will be outdated in a few months, probably. Their standards will be even higher for us to reach. But if you go to page six, it will give you their recommendations, a target completion date of when it should be done, and then who's responsible for that. So the first one is recommended revisions to the zoning bylaws. So the responsible parties will be the Planning Board, the Building Inspector slash zoning Enforcement Officer, and myself, or the Town Planner, whoever that may be. Just because some of these are, well, some of these are pretty far in the future, you know? Just saying. So...
You're going to hit the lottery, I feel.
So you'll see that they start with the, you know, open space residential development, and, you know, talk about that, and talk about our protected lands as a way of, you know, showing the reviewers what we are already doing in terms of protecting land and creating pervious areas throughout the community. And then actually, on page seven is where they start with their suggested recommendations. So the first one is, like I said, under parking. So right now, we have a minimum parking requirement. So you have a retail space, you need one parking space for every 200 square feet. So if you had a large box store, that creates a ton of parking. So what they're saying is maybe in certain situations, and maybe not everywhere, but maybe, you know, the larger stores, you look at a maximum number of parking spaces instead of the minimum. And then maybe you incorporate some of that, you know, land banking for future parking if they show it's needed. The next one is consider reducing the parking requirements and limiting parking stall size to 30% of the current requirement. Well, that would only be 7 by 14, and I don't think I want to park in that parking space, so that might be too small. But we, you know, and this is where, you know, we do have a whole section on parking, and it does allow spaces of that size for compact car. We allow so many compact car spaces that are that size. In the commercial tourist district, we already allow 9 by 18. So I think, you know, we need to look at it holistically and say, are we allowing enough compact car parking? Are we having people create too much parking? If it's, you know, senior housing, for instance, do we really need two parking spaces per unit, or is one and a half sufficient? Things like that. So it's really just getting more creative about how we look at development as we review them, and what's appropriate to handle that development, to make sure that we're not creating pavement where we don't need pavement, to keep as much pervious area as we can. And then, yeah, the next one talked about land banking, and then low-impact stormwater management techniques such as bio-retention areas, rain gardens, vegetated swales, and filter strips within the landscape areas. And we do talk about that a little bit, but mostly in the OSRD section of the bylaw. And I think, you know, Conservation Commission always tries to encourage this. We do try to encourage it. I think the biggest issue with some of these, I'll call them alternative structures, is that people don't understand enough about how to maintain them. For instance, we had somebody in town, and there was a rain garden, and they didn't know the purpose of it, so they humped it up with earth and planted all their flowers on it. So it no longer functioned as a rain garden. It was a garden, but it wasn't a rain garden. So then all the runoff is going into the streets and into the neighbors, and so we had to go out and say, oh, maybe you don't realize this, but it's a rain garden. So if we're going to incorporate those, then we need to think about making things like, let's make sure the operations and maintenance plan is recorded with the special permit so that any prospective purchaser, when they close and they get their deed, they understand what these structures are and how they need to maintain them. So just a different way of thinking about things as we go along. And then the next one is on density, and it's talking about, and coverage limits on pervious law coverage of less than 50 for targeted low-density areas, less than 15%, excuse me. So right now, we have 15% building coverage, and the driveway is exempt for residential properties. I will say, in our low-density areas, I mean, the typical coverage is like 4% or 5%, so we're not really getting that 15%. Where we are seeing 15% or more is, you know, kind of the village centers around the lakes. Those are very tiny lots that, you know, have already been built upon. So, but it's, you know, definitely something to look at and think about as we go forward in the future. And then on to site plan review with the green roofs for commercial and industrial properties when appropriate conditions exist. You know, again, I think that comes with a learning curve. It comes with a maintenance curve. If they're not maintained, they're not going to function. So, you know, water harvesting, such as cisterns and rain barrels, we encourage those all the time now, and a lot of residences use those when they come to zoning board of appeals, or they go to the Conservation Commission, we're asking that they incorporate some of those things, so. So that's really, so some of those things are not a heavy lift. A lot of it's education, but then others will take more time and thought as we go through. And then the next is updates to the subdivision regulations, and the target completion date is 2027. And actually, I've been wanting to work on these for quite some time. They were last updated in 2002. They really could use an update. I had started an update a while back, and then really got stuck on exactly what this wants us to do, is to look at the pavement width in the street design, with how much pavement we're creating. So where's the happy medium between, you know, how much pavement do we really need? What does that width need to be? Could the paved width be smaller? And then maybe you have a grass strip, and then maybe you have the sidewalk, and then maybe you have the grass strip, so that people feel safer walking on sidewalks, we're not creating as much parking, but there's still that grass strip so that if there were a fire, or somebody was parked on the street, or you needed an ambulance, the ambulance could still get through. So it's those kind of things that we need to think about, you know. In some cases, the smallest pavement width we have is 22 feet, I believe, but we have a 60, either a 50 or 60-foot right-of-way, depending on how many lots you're serving. So those are all things to look at. And then again, it's, you know, kind of those alternative stormwater management techniques. And then also doing curbing that kind of has the opening in them, so it allows it to kind of drain out, things like that. And then the next section is driveways, and this is where, quite honestly, none of us were really comfortable with their recommendation of 9. We asked them to change it. We are changing the memo to reflect 10. We still think even that's a little small. A lot of driveways now, if you think about what's left to be built in Sturbridge, the small lots, right on the street, close, you know, town centers, those things, they're already developed. What we're getting are these more challenging lots that are up on the hill, you know, weigh-in on a very large lot. They're kind of going around some wetlands to get up there. And if the pay, if your driveway's not wide enough, what if you're coming down your driveway, nobody can see you? Now, if somebody's trying to deliver a package, or just somebody came to visit somebody, now there's two of you, and you're face-to-face. Somebody needs to, you know, back out one way or the other. Maybe it's too steep to pull off to the side. Maybe it's a wetland area to pull out to the side. So, you know, I think when you think about driveway widths, it'd be great to reduce the pervious, but really, they're there for a reason. They're to provide safe access to that property for all types of vehicles, whether it be a, you know, an ambulance, police car, or fire truck. And so I really think we have to think about that. If we do think about it, then maybe you could do it on driveways of a certain length, but they're required to have certain pull-offs, so that you're, I'm going so far up the driveway, oh, I see somebody coming, I can pull into this pull-off. So, you know, let's just be thoughtful about it as we're going forward, and not just saying, you know, they said we should be 10 feet. Yeah, that's great, we're going to be 10 feet. No, let's figure out what's appropriate for us, given the lots that are being built right now.
Yeah, particularly in some of the much larger lots, as they are anyways, you still have a lot of, you know, pervious. And it's not, you know, it's something the town has considered all along. We've never been big on allowing pervious.
No, no, not really. I think we look at that pretty carefully.
Right.
And then the next one, we had a difference of opinions on this one as well, encouraging the use of permeable pavement. We don't, the town doesn't have the ability to maintain that. It has to be vacuumed periodically. We don't have the equipment to do that. So I think a compromise could be potentially in some private developments. It would be nice to encourage that if they understood what it took to maintain it, and if they had the appropriate means to maintain it, because otherwise, it won't be permeable, well, permeable for long. It'll log up and not work. So...
And that really hasn't seemed to have caught on much anywhere. I know people have talked about it in the past, but every time we brought it up, it seems to be that issue that it has to be maintained, or it isn't going to work.
Right. We're using a lot of the pervious pavers around lake properties.
Right.
So when somebody wants to do a patio, we're encouraging them to use those pavers. But it's much easier to maintain on a small scale.
It's different, yeah. You've got the big openings, and you can have something grown in between them and so forth.
Exactly. And then the next is, you know, erosion control and sedimentation plans are required. We do have that. And then it says, consider requiring minimum setbacks and written procedures for inspection, which we do. And they're saying, Planning Department and Conservation Commission issue standard conditions during project reviews, consider incorporating similar control measures into the regulations. So what they were saying is, when they interviewed each of us, when we had our meeting at the end, they said, it's very clear that you're all incorporating best practices. Like, the way we review permits is great. We put it into a system. It goes out to all the departments. We get everybody's feedback. We're making sure that applicants understand. We're all having pre-construction meetings. We're all inspecting erosion controls, things like that. But what they're saying is, you know, I may not always be here. The Conservation Agent may not always be here. DPW may not. So we should, you know, draft those as regulations, so that in the future, people adhere to the same standards that we've worked hard. I've been here 20 years now. Took a long time to get a lot of those procedures in place. So I think it does make sense to, you know, kind of enumerate some of that, so it just becomes standard practice, no matter who's sitting in my seat going forward. And then after that, we go into revisions to the stormwater management bylaw. And so responsible parties, Town Planner, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, and DPW Director. I see a lot of this really falling necessarily on the Conservation Agent and the DPW Director. They're usually the first point for doing the review. They're more familiar with the Massachusetts stormwater standards than I am. When we have a large project, I hire somebody to do that review. So while we can assist, and we will have to review and adopt, you know, from my end, I would need some help with that. The last time, we did use a consultant to update the stormwater standards, so. And the target completion date on that is December 2027. And then the next one are revisions to wetlands bylaw regulations, and then that would be the Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, and DPW Director. And the target completion on that is December 2027. And then on the next page, just some miscellaneous items that really apply to all of us. So Town Planner, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, and Public Works. And just talking about, you know, low-impact development techniques, encouraging private roads to incorporate best practices or create roadway associations, which many of our private roadways have created associations, some have not. Encouraging, we encourage native plantings in the bylaws and regulations, but maybe develop a list of those. So I do have a current list of trees, but the plantings, we don't have a list for all the plantings. And that's not a bad idea, because sometimes you could be buying plants in Connecticut. For example, you could buy a burning bush in Connecticut, but they're not allowed in Massachusetts. So it does make sense to have that information available to people, given how close we are to the state line, too. And then provide opportunities for staff participation in LID workshops. I don't know if any of you were on the board, but years back, Planning and Conservation sponsored a low-impact development workshop for developers, board members, and staff. And it was pretty successful. We had it at Town Hall. I charged everybody the cost of a McNux lunch, if they wanted lunch, and we ordered brown bags, and everybody, so we could schedule it right as people were getting out of work. And we heard a lot of crinkling all night, but people were eating, and we had Horsey Wenton come out and do the session, and it was really good. We had a lot of people there, too. So that's what I learned early on, food brings people in.
Almost does, right?
So we did that.
Always.
So we do have the old booklet on that. I gave that to Lauren as well, just to think about maybe doing something in the future. And then again, a lot of these are talking about, you know, green infrastructure, participate in the rain barrel sale. I just saw on the news the other night, Springfield is doing that right now, where residents can buy the rain barrels. Modify and distribute public education materials that are available for Mass DEP and EPA regarding green infrastructure, like rain gardens. We even talked about internally, maybe having, maybe having a session on rain gardens, explaining to people what they are, how they can build their own, and how to maintain them. And then the next one, consider hiring a full-time employee dedicated to stormwater management to routinely inspect installed stormwater features and to verify existing features or following operations and maintenance plans. And I know this obviously isn't the budget year to bring this up, but I do think that at some time near in the future, the town really needs to consider this, because if you think about, we have a business on Route 20, and the parking lot has flooded out onto Route 20 a couple of times, and every time we go there, it's because their infrastructure wasn't maintained. But it's, you know, different managers, they don't understand what they're supposed to do. And we have a lot of, you know, think about all the site plans you've approved. Think about all the sites Conservation Commission has approved. They all have some stormwater component to them. So if they're never being maintained, or if they're not being installed appropriately, or we didn't have somebody appropriate to review it to make sure it was going to do the job we needed it to do, then that's where you create problems. And, you know, certainly not my wheelhouse. I'm not an engineer. I can do a lot of things, but, you know, stormwater is not one of them. And, you know, so I just think it is, I think it's a very good recommendation that, you know, may not get traction for several years, but I think most towns are getting to that point.
Jean, would you imagine that being in the Planning Department, or the zoning enforcement building inspection department, or the DPW?
DPW. I would say DPW, because if you think about subdivision roadways, we accept the roads, we accept the stormwater structures. So that's, you know, a pretty large amount of stormwater structures right there. And then if you take all of the commercial ones and add that on top of it, you know, I mean, we own and maintain the ones in accepted subdivisions. The commercial are private, but that, it would make sense that that same person that's reviewing it for DPW would also be able to do the commercial ones, and even the residential ones. You know, a lot of times, I'll call down to DPW for some advice on a project. You know, they deal with it firsthand. They're the ones getting the calls when something fails on Route 20 or on Route 131.
They know what works and what doesn't.
Right, exactly.
And what the problem is.
So I kind of see it more of a DPW component.
The town DPW service the Route 20 and other state roads, do they maintain that?
No, we don't maintain the state roads. So where we're having issues are structures on private property that are then...
That are spilling out into the right-of-way.
Spilling out into the right-of-way, yeah. Creating issues. And then it becomes everybody's issue. So I do see some validity to that. And then the last one is talking about how we do use permitting software for interdepartmental review of projects. And I hold monthly land use division meetings with all of our staff. We have applicants come in before they file to make sure that we're kind of getting eyes on the project in advance, guide them to the appropriate regulations, or if they're not meeting things, and then we all put written comments for them. So this is another situation where you guys are doing a great job, but nobody says you have to do this. And just because, I started this when I came, because when I first came here, I felt like departments weren't talking to each other. I felt like, okay, I'm, you know, I'm working for these five boards and committees, and other people are working for other departments and other committees, and they may have reviewed this, but they didn't tell me they reviewed it. And I don't know what they said. And so I started, again, it was food. I used to bring in, I used to bring in donuts and coffee once a month, and had everybody, this was back when we were in the old Town Hall before it was renovated, we'd sit in the middle of the room and eat donuts and coffee, and talk about all the applications. And I still do it the third Wednesday of the month. We have our staff meeting where we can talk about projects and applicants, or if somebody maybe feels uncomfortable going to a site, we can get somebody to partner up with us to go out. So they're saying, you really should document that, so that, you know, in the future, those same procedures that work are being followed. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Very good. Thank you very much. I think that's a good overview. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
For the next steps, very good. And then, next thing is the pilot travel.
So we have a pilot, well, that's kind of the last one. The next thing was actually the Cedar Street meeting.
Oh, right.
So we met with the residents on Cedar Street. Heather Blakely and myself met with the residents that will be impacted by a proposed sidewalk construction to be built from Route 20 up to the Burgess School Road. It was a very good meeting. The people that, all but two residential abutters attended. One had already given her approval prior to the meeting, but they all agreed to sign off on the easements that were needed for the sidewalks, because they really want to see the sidewalk. And Heather's working with the couple of businesses, Cedar Street Grill already said they would do whatever it took as well to get a sidewalk. So there is an article on the town meeting to allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into easement agreements with people, and if all goes well, we could have a sidewalk by the end of summer.
Great. That'd be good.
Yeah, this is from the Complete Streets Grant that we got a couple of years ago. And then the school got a Safe Roots to School grant, and that's to run a sidewalk from Cedar Street up Burgess School Road to the school. It'll be like a cantilevered boardwalk up.
Nice.
So I'm not sure they... So I'm not sure they received all the funding they needed for that, but they have been talking over some design plans for that. So I think that's good. And then, the next one is the pilot travel quarterly report, no concerns were noted. We did have a backup a few weeks back, and I did call and ask them to get their person out in the lot that guides the traffic, and they got somebody right out there and took care of that, so they acted pretty quickly on that, so I was pleased with that. And then, let's see, next meeting, April 7th, that will be the only meeting, because we have elections and we have town meeting in April. Shaws will, representative for Shaws, actually, it's Next Grid, will be coming in, they're doing roof-mounted solar, so they need a waiver of a site plan just for the concrete pad that will hold their equipment in the back of the building. And that's all I have.
Okay, so this backup in the traffic, now, I know what, a few months ago, there was some discussion, I think at the Board of Selectmen meeting and so forth, that people were really complaining.
Yeah.
But did that, it's just not a regular thing, is?
Happens on occasion.
Which traffic thing are you referring?
Pilot travel.
You know, going to the pilot, down here on...
Yeah, I wasn't aware that anyone had gone to the Board of Selectmen. We do get complaints, I'm not saying we don't get complaints, we do get complaints from the residents. From time to time, Heather and I went down, and we identified locations where we could put up signs of, you know, pilot travel this way, and no truck traffic here. What's happening is sometimes people are, they're getting lost, so maybe they're going down Breakneck, and now they're trying to get out of there, and they're maybe, you know, going on the side of somebody's yard, or they're stuck, and it's creating chaos. So we did go, we did identify some locations where signs could be installed, so we did that, and anytime that we noticed a problem, we called a manager, and they get their, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the term that they call them, their, it's like their advocate or whatever, but they go out and try to kind of move things around. You know, sometimes, it, I hate to say, but it sometimes can't be helped, if there's an accident on the turnpike, and they're dumping everybody off the turnpike.
Right, no, occasionally that happens, certainly, and it's happening probably more and more with all the traffic.
Yeah, there's days where we can't get out of the parking lot here to leave, because they're sending everybody off the highway down here, so, you know, at times like that, it exacerbates, I think, you know, I look at it this way, if I'm in a car stuck in traffic, I'd want to pull off if I could. And really, if you're in a trailer truck, you probably really want to pull off if you can, you know, and that's when I think, the parking lot gets full, people can't pull in, traffic gets jammed up, and they need to get somebody out there to help direct the traffic, but I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I...
No, it's not, you know, a frequent occurrence, and it's not like you're...
And I will say, they do try to rectify it, once we call them. I'd love to get to the point where we don't have to call them, that they just realize, oh, hey, we got a little bit of a situation. I mean, that would be ideal, but at least they are cooperative when we call, so.
Yeah, we keep a record of when we have to call, or do we have an idea, some kind of...
Well, yeah, I have all the emails, so.
Great. Okay, well, thank you.
Anything new on Noble?
Um, yes, actually, so, I think I sent you in last month's update, maybe, but anyway, Mass DOT has agreed that they meet the warrants, and that a signalized intersection can be installed, so we're back at the very first design that we started with, and...
What's around with that?
We're waiting.
That was later.
That was later.
Yes, so...
We just had a light.
Come full circle.
So we, yes, so it did come full circle, so we gave them some additional information, we're waiting for feedback, they have until the end of the month. They are now saying that we're somewhere between 90 and 100% complete with our design. I have only $14,000 remaining in the grant, and the owner has put in almost $100,000 of his own money at this point on the design, but once we get through that, he will be able to install the signalized intersection at his own expense. It is considered temporary mitigation, because they are now looking at potentially putting a roundabout at the intersection of Hall Road, and, you know, strangely, we've been saying for about 20 years, something needs to happen at Hall Road, so that is on the DOT list, it's actually been assigned a project number, so they will be hiring an engineering company to do a corridor evaluation. So I think, eventually, I think what you will see is, you will see a median, just like in some of the other towns that they've upgraded, you will see, and you will see a series of roundabouts, going down 20 where they can fit them, and then eventually, the Noble Light will need to come out, because there will be a roundabout in very close proximity, so.
Any expected date of operation of the light?
We have to get it finished design, bid specs done, out to bid, before we can even build it, so.
Okay.
No idea, no idea.
Now, in that design, there's still some adjustment to the Banks driveway for that, isn't there, with that light?
There will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be.
With the light?
Yes.
Yeah, even with that, there's some...
Yeah, which they were aware of that, and they...
Yeah, they changed their design a little bit to anticipate that.
Yeah, so they did change their design, and then, if you remember, they came back and said, we don't want to build this right now, because we don't know if the light's going to be installed.
Right.
So if, once the signal is installed, then they'll do their, their part of the design over there. But to spend the money now while they're waiting, I don't blame them for not wanting to do that.
So it sounds like it'll be a while before the light is really there. What can happen to that site? I mean, is he starting building on it, or anything, or no?
He's not going to start anything until he knows he's building the light.
Building the light.
Building the signal. You know, and then, I mean, you think about it, so we did it for an AV discovery center with the climate, the way things are now, with things changing, and grants being froze and things, you know, I'm not sure.
Real question, I guess, okay, yeah.
Not sure.
Okay, very good.
How about the medical center across from Cracker Barrel?
So, nothing yet, they are moving forward with it, but nothing yet. They're hoping to, you know, start construction this season, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good, okay, thank you. Any other old new business, Jean?
I was excited to hear that Hall Road has a DOT number, and it might be moving forward. You've also mentioned in the past that 131 and 20, they've looked at doing something.
That has a project number as well.
I assume it's further along the Hall Road, but still...
It is further along, but they've pulled it back, it was scheduled for the FY26 tip, and now they're moving it up to the FY27 tip. And from what I understand, they're having a difficult time getting engineering firms to do the analysis and plans for them, and I think, from what we've heard from a couple of vendors, it's due to insurance requirements to do work for them now, so they, I don't know whether they're going to have to adjust their insurance requirements to be able to get people to take on these jobs.
Insurance seems to be driving a lot of things these days.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a sense of Hall Road being earlier than that?
No.
It just has a number, and...
Just has a, it just has a project number, which means they're just starting to do their analysis now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. All right. Nothing, I'm good.
All set, thank you.
Grant? I guess all set then, most of the turn.
So move, second.
On favor? Very good, have a good rest of the evening.